All right, we're gonna start rolling. I'm calling this meeting of the Exeter Planning Board to order, November 21st, 2019. I'm gonna start with introductions of the board. To my far right is Peter Steckler, who's an alternate, who will be voting and acting as a full member this evening. To his left is Nico Papa Costa-Dees. Come on, not bad, right?
Not bad at all.
Not as good as I did before. Pete Cameron Clerk, my name's Aaron Brown, I'm the acting chair this evening. And to my left is Gwen English, full member. At the other table is our town planner, David Sharples, and our recording secretary, Daniel Hoyer. We have our agenda in front of us, and we're gonna start with our approval of the minutes from October 24th. So, you know, we have some very active members in that regard. Gwen?
Quick question, on line 69, waiver requests and could be between himself or his designate designatee or first-time applicants, should it be for first-time applicants? This is line 69.
Sorry, I was writing. Let's see. Let me get it to her.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think first-time applicants.
Sixty-nine, it's probably, sounds like sixty-nine. I don't know, I don't remember, I, sounds good, I'm good.
Four, to put four.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I think that's right, as well.
'Cause I don't think the
They're not gonna make this.
First-time applicants are gonna make a decision.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, line 84, I would just suggest adding one additional statement at the, one additional sentence that says, "Board turnover is also a consideration." That, that was a, that was a concern of mine when we were having that discussion. We talked at the last meeting about updating it, and that was one piece that I felt was still missing.
Okay, Peter, so would you just add that to line 84?
Yes.
So, for Daniel's benefit, can you just say it again?
Board turnover is also a consideration.
Mr. Chair, if there are no others, I'll make a motion.
Second.
To approve the October 24th, 2019 draft minutes as amended.
Now, may I please do that?
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? I believe it passes five to zero. And let's move on to the November 7th, 2019 minutes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, on line 54, um, I think I'd, I think I'd feel more comfortable if it says, um, what they will have if this is approved will be nine spaces. They, they, what we have now, actually what they have now are four spaces. If this, if this, and it was approved, but it would have nine spaces and then one handicapped space subsequent to our planning board approval of the project. It's a tense thing.
You could, you might also modify that to indicate that that's what the plan is proposing as
Okay.
An alternative.
Oh, and then, uh, test pits are not, so long as this is adequate. Oh, the next, on line 55, and I, um, thought that last sentence, "Test pits have not been done yet, so as long as soils are adequate," something was left out. I don't know. Something should be added to that sentence.
Maybe adequate for infiltration.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that's...
And then I'd also suggest on line 55, where it says, "There is an 18-inch infiltration trench," where it says, "Which and require," no additional runoff, um, "that will require."
Oh, yeah.
I, I, there's some odd wording in there.
Oh.
I'm good with, there is an 18-inch infiltration trench, period. And then just striking "which and require," no, I don't know what that, yeah, that's confusing.
Yep. And then while we're there, at the end of line 56, where it says, "One foot above the town water table," I think you just, I would strike the word "town" there, just to indicate the water table.
Well, the estimated seasonal high water table is what I said. I would always, I wouldn't just say water table, I would say, "Estimated seasonal high water table." So you should put that in there.
Okay, that's fine. There's no, we don't have a town water table
No, we do not.
At one elevation.
It should be one foot above the estimated seasonal high water table.
Line 79, I think we should change that to where it says, "Property line and would be minimal to do pa, oh, maybe I'm wrong. I was thinking when I first read that, it was "due to paving and drainage," but maybe I read it wrong. I think it should be "due to" with a D-U-E, not a D-O, but I don't know if other people read that the same way.
Oh, that may be. That is a little confusing. Is "due to"
I think "the grading is minimal" is what he's trying to say. Because of the paving and drainage. He needs to get inside that line, right? Needs to get close to the property line. I mean, you could say "to perform paving and drainage," and give it a D-O. I think what he's saying is he's gonna do minimal grading in that area, but he has to get inside that area for paving and drainage.
Okay. I think, yeah, that makes more sense. Yep. That sounds good.
Just recalling the conversation.
On line 123, I think, where it says, "At 83 Main Street to be approved," I think we need to enter a B in there. And I'll just keep going. Line 145, I think we should indicate, I, I think this is the case, Mr. Sharples noted he received a letter noting that construction will stop at, I think we should insert "Phase Two," or something to indicate what "Two" is. I think it's Phase Two. Does that sound right?
It's either Phase Two or two buildings, Phase Two.
And then I think we need to change Jen Martel at the end of line 147 to, I think, the Town Assistant Engineer Jennifer Maes is my guess.
Which one?
Forty-eight.
Line 148.
One forty-eight.
That's all for me.
Yeah, that would be Jen Maes.
Line 157, Mr. Sharples sent out an email for review.
I did.
Okay, not send.
Oh.
It says send.
Oh, 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 I got you.
Send.
I got you.
It's just a spelling.
Okay, yeah.
And then on 186, Grissette is
I was just gonna say that is G-R-I-S-E-T.
I have something, but I can't see what it is. Looking at it, reading it again. I don't know what, where I was. I don't know. I've read it, but I don't see it. Do you mind if I move the?
Remove it.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Town of Exeter Planning Board, November 7th, 2019 draft minutes as amended.
Second?
We have a second and a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes five to zero. Sorry. Kinda, I don't know if that's the right thing to hit. I think I'm hitting the, uh,
Be careful, don't break anything, but don't hit your, don't hit your phone.
I know, I hit that thing, that's, I think it's electronic.
That's the power outlet.
His phone's on the, knock on wood. I was gonna hit you. I was gonna hit you, but you've been so nice today.
I know, it's not like you.
All right.
You started off so nice.
So, for new business, we have an application, IS Realty Trust Planning Board Case Number 19-13, a proposed five-lot subdivision of Wetlands, CUP 100 Linden Street and Patricia Avenue. Dave, can you update us on the status of this case?
Yes, the, the case had been before the Technical Review Committee back on October 3rd, and I included in the last packets, we didn't include a new packet this time, so I'm assuming everyone kept their materials. Copy of the TRC letter was attached, the plans and supporting documents are being reviewed by Underwood Engineers. And the applicant was scheduled to appear before the Conservation Commission, but was, didn't have the information that was needed for the CUP, so they, but they did go on a site walk, right? Correct? Did you have a site walk of it? Yeah?
I did not.
Okay.
I think, I think people were out there, but it wasn't me.
Okay, all right. So, I believe they had a site where we invited the board.
That was the other, that was the Grissette.
I'm sorry, Grissette project, that was the Grissette project. I'm sorry, I got my project confused. And then we got like three more projects in today, so, project, I am project delirious. No, this one didn't, so, but then they didn't get the information in. We had the TRC required planned revisions, part, one of the biggest things with the drainage detention pond and the elevations didn't seem to work. But the application is complete, we just have comments and concerns on some of the aspects of it, but they've submitted everything to meet the application as far as completeness. But they do have to go to the Conservation Commission still. So, whatever happens tonight, I, I believe the application is complete for review purposes, it can be accepted, you can have the public hearing, 'cause the last time they came, there was continued, there were some folks here from the public, and we continued it and told them till tonight. I see there might be some public here interested in speaking tonight. I don't see any reason why the board couldn't, you know, accept the plans as complete for review purpose, start the process, but at the end of the day, I would recommend tabling the matter until they can deal with the concom and get what they need, so we can get a recommendation on the conditional use permit from them prior to the board taking action.
Okay. She wants to open the public hearing.
I would, that's what I would
The application is complete to be opened.
Yeah, I would, I would accept the application if you're so inclined to do so, and then open it up. Yeah, just start the hearing, but in the end, table it.
Yeah. Don't take action.
Okay, do you want a motion then?
Yes.
Do we open this one?
Yes, please.
I move that, the application of, I'm just gonna get my reading glasses, LS Realty Trust, or proposed subdivision, be opened.
Second. Planning Board Case Number 19-
Excuse me, Planning Board Case Number 19-13.
In second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes five to zero. I won't pound the gavel.
Thank you.
You can dress up the motion if you want to.
I think we're good. All right, is someone here from the application, from the applicant, to address the board?
We have an easel?
Yeah, we should, what happened?
We took one downstairs for the, for the last planning board meeting, is it still there, do you think?
I have pretty steady hands.
It's a hard way to talk, though. I think, so people can see we've talked about this before, they can, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Helpful.
Helpful. Yeah. So, is there something? Is this, is that gonna miss or?
Well, actually, it's all, looks like just a bond, these, extension, extension, we're gonna discuss the, the master plan and stuff, so we probably will talk about that. And then just his normal stuff. So it's kinda under there. Won't be anything formal, but we'll just be discussing, you know, a little update, the board, as to what, we had a meeting this morning, everything.
Great.
Well, because they're coming in this summer, too.
You can't see it, the engineers.
All right, all right.
It's getting closer, can't believe it's, it's getting closer. Yeah. Ready?
Andy Winter, IS Realty Trust, Re Vintage Drive, Exeter.
Welcome.
Why, thank you. We had a bunch of misses on different information going back and forth between the town and the engineer, nobody in particular.
Sure.
And I prefer to do it correctly, and
Okay.
We need to get to the concom, because it was a, an issue before.
So, I, so I think, I get it that the application's complete, but in process, essentially.
More, yeah, more, there's a few things left to do, but
Yeah.
Conservation Commission apparently comes before this. You'll have to stick with me, this is my first time.
Not really. They might think so.
Well, it's just, before you can act on a conditional use, before
We get, they wait in.
The board, the planning board acts on a conditional use permit, they get comments from the, from the Conservation Commission.
But quite often, we will have opened the case, like tonight, and we will have given you feedback, and the public will give you feedback, and then the conserv, 'cause a lot of our applications aren't completed in one meeting.
Understood.
So, to get you kinda moving down the road
And fixing the things
You're fine.
As we go along.
Yeah. You're fine.
It's a, it's a five-and-a-half acre lot, roughly, and we're gonna, we propose to put in a small cul-de-sac with four additional lots.
Yep.
And the house comes, the house frontage is actually on the other road, which is a private drive. And it's pretty simple, I think, except for when you get into the technical aspects with the drainage and this and that, and I think we have that under control. We're waiting for Mark West to get us some additional information. And that's what we'd like to do.
All right. Okay. Does the board have any questions at this time for the applicant? Do you wanna hear from the public first?
Yeah.
All right, is there anybody here from the public to speak on this application? If there is, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Seneca Hills, 14 Riverbend Circle, I'm in a butter of the proposed property. So, I've been to the, the planning office, taken a look at, at the plans to date, haven't had a chance to, to see revisions. One concern that comes up, our house will be at an elevation lower than the buildup of Lot 1, which is the property that abuts us. The proposed location for the retention pond is on the far side between Lots 2 and 3, I believe. Our one concern is, with the, the raising of the elevation for Lot 1, that's gonna create a downhill effect towards our house, and I don't see anything that will help guide runoff towards the detention pond. So, it seems like the, the barrel and the other parts are structured to catch the runoff from the street, the driveway area, but not off the actual house block. I'm not an engineer with these things, I'm not sure what can be done about that, but that is one concern that we have, that we'd like to see addressed, you know, however we go about addressing that. The, the other major concern, or not concern, but what we've noticed is, the land's already been cleared, pretty much, and there's not really much left as far as vegetation between us and the lots. It used to be obviously a nice wooded lot, a lot of privacy for our young children and our, our back neighbors' children. And we, we love having neighbors, but we don't necessarily wanna be seeing our neighbors. You know, it's one of the reasons why we picked this property, we'd like to be able And we, we love having neighbors, but we don't necessarily wanna be seeing our neighbors, uh, you know, it's one of the reasons why we, we picked this property, we'd like to be able to maintain some of that privacy. So, uh, I'd just like to further understand, is there gonna be any additional vegetation brought in, uh, planning, landscaping, what that's gonna actually look like? I understand it's probably too early in the process, um, to discuss that, but I did wanna put it on the record that, that's something that we'd like to, uh, see addressed at some point. And then finally, the, the other note is, you know, can we push it closer to the street and farther away from us? The, the, you know, Lot One, if you see, they look like they're, they're lined up really nice, you know, if you were looking from the street, they, you know, they'd be flush with each other, it'd be nice. Maybe, uh, uh, to skew it a little bit, to, you know, push it a little bit closer to, and I'll point it out here. You know, to, to have it rise, to pull on the coffee, a little bit more back, more so in the back, it might make the property actually more.
Yeah, I know, it might.
Uh, it might make the property more desirable, cause you might get more of a backyard that way. So, those were the, the three key points that, uh, looking at the plans, we, we didn't see addressed directly, that we would like to, you know, have some sort of decision or discussion about
Sure.
as this goes on.
Great. Thank you, so I, I can provide a little feedback on some of that, so typically, um, in the application process, a applicant will address boundary screening at some point, uh, along property lines. The, I'm not, I'm just trying to give you feedback, so, the elevation change that you're talking about on Lot One?
Yes.
Uh, are you talking about the fact that there's gonna be a house on Lot One, or you're perceiving that they're gonna bring all the land up on Lot One?
It, it appears that if I'm, if I'm reading it right, it's saying the elevation is fifty-three, I assume that's feet above some designation.
Is that accurate?
Well, yeah, it sounds right.
Are they bringing the elevation up?
Well, the, the existing elevation is forty-nine to fifty on the lot right now.
Yep.
So they will, you can see on the final grade, on the, the best way, the best plan for that is the grading plan. Let's see what sheet it is, what sheet is it, sheet five of ten. You can see that they bring it up to, they bring it a little bit up, uh, the sill's at fifty-three and a half, the garage slab's at fifty-two. So the house itself will be up, and then there's fifty-two right around the house, but then it drops back down to the existing grades of fifty in the front and forty-nine in the rear, so the, a lot of the lot won't change, it'll just, right, the house is gonna arch up a little bit.
Right, and that, that's really the, the concern, is, you know, what comes down from the house and then rolls off the back of that? It, it's gonna now be downhill, right now it's flat, right, so, water hits it, it all, you know, drains down pretty consistently to the, the water table, which isn't much farther below the ground. But, so any sort of, with the saturation, any sort of elevation, that water's gonna just come right off the, the top, I feel. There's not enough space there to give it enough time to saturate into the ground, so most of it will just simply be running, running off, uh, into the, the existing grade, so.
Right now, on that same plan, um, on sheet five, there, there's a, there's a detail around the house, and that's a stone trench detail.
Okay.
And it has, it, you know, the details in the, in the sheet, it's got, uh, six inches of low man seed, but then it has a foot of, uh, clear stone, one to two inch diameter clear stone underneath. And they probably, I mean, the engineer's not here, so I'm kinda speculating why they put it, they're, they're not around every house, but, um, they're around three of them, probably because they're in low-lying areas to have someplace for that roof runoff, because we don't know what type of roof it is, or where it's gonna drain, or if it's gonna have gutters, but they put this, this stone trench around the house, and then sometimes when the water table's high, they raise up the, the, the house a little bit and the grade, so that one inch stone trench, one foot deep stone trench, is not sitting in the water. Cause if it's, if it's, if it's in the water, it doesn't do anything, the water runs off, so if you raise it up, you get that one foot of storage around the stone trench. That might be what they're doing here to try to address the issue that you raised, but I will, I will confer that with the engineer. I hear you, and I'll, I'll make sure that we talk about that.
You said that's page five of ten?
Uh, five of ten is the grading plan, and that shows the stone trench, the details on a later sheet, but it also shows the final grading, and so forth, the thick lines, thick solid line is final grade.
Okay.
And it has, you know, fifty-one, fifty, fifty and fifty-one, you'll see it, and then the dashed lines, that are a little more faint, that have forty-nine, fifty, that's the existing grade.
That's how I read that.
So the hard lines are the, gonna be the new grade, but then, where, like, if there's no hard line, you know, and it's just still a soft line, it's just gonna ta- tailor back to the existing grade.
And, um, another thing we generally look for is a landscaping plan. And a lot of times, some detail, and we, uh, have been encouraging rain gardens as well, to catch a lot of the roof runoff, rain barrels, that's something that we've had a lot of conversations, we haven't had many.
Recently.
Yeah, we haven't, we just haven't had much single-family stuff in a while.
That's true.
But that's been something that we've pushed a lot for, and we really do, as a board, uh, try to make sure that the runoff created by the development of the land does not affect the abutters. So that's really one of our responsibilities, actually, as a board, is to, uh, make sure we're seeing details and execution in the field, that doesn't make the new, more intense use of the land impact negatively, such as water flowing out across property lines down the road. Unless it's in a basin or something, you know? So appreciate your feedback, thank you.
And actually, I apologize, that made me think of one other thing. The maintenance of the detention pond. Or retention pond, I'm not sure. Who does that fall upon? Is that the responsibility, it's not the responsibility of the town?
It's generally, uh, well, Dave, don't they have to submit something now?
Yeah, it would be, it, right, at this point, the, the way it works is there's, uh, uh, some sort of homeowners association created, uh, to maintain it. Because we maintain the roadway if we accept it, but we do not accept the drainage facilities.
Right.
So then, and then we require annual reporting requirements from those.
Okay.
Admittedly, sometimes in a small situation, you know, it's, it's it's tough to get, you know, the, the maintenance, but if, if there's a problem, then there is someone, the homeowners association, responsible to go in there and, and, and remedy the issue.
Okay, so the, the builder puts that in place, or is that part of the?
The builder puts it in.
Puts it in, okay.
Yeah, but then the builder, you know,
When he moves.
sells all the lots.
Right.
And then there is no builder left, and it's a homeowners association collectively, and sometimes they assess a annual fee, there's like, you know, they elect a, uh, an office, you know, a slate of officers. I mean, it's gonna be a pretty small group here, uh, but they would participate in, in making sure they, they maintain the, uh, drainage.
But it is required to have a homeowners association of some sort?
Of some sort of, yeah, whether it's a maintenance agreement, there's a couple of different ways to do it, but it is a requirement that it's done, because otherwise, no one would be responsible.
Well, right, eventually, eventually it'll fail.
Exactly, it fails, it grows in, who does it?
Right.
Uh, but, no, we ensure that there's long-term maintenance responsibility for it.
Okay, excellent. Alright, thank you very much for.
So, real quick, in response to Mr. Hipkiss's concern about infiltration and drainage, I guess, and this may be a question to flag for the engineer, when they are here, um, but looking at that stone trench detail, I, you know, I'm concerned about what happens in the winter when the soil's frozen, and you can't get water down into that, that stone infiltration area. You know, you're, you're gonna result in direct runoff, so I, I guess that would be a concern of mine, um, given that we often have frozen soils nowadays with large rain events, so, something for the engineer and the applicant to consider.
Yeah, so we're gonna need to see landscaping, I'm sure Dave will talk to you guys, if he hasn't already, about that, landscaping details that include drainage, and rain gardens, and rain barrels, those are the things we try to encourage, is the reuse of them. Really, pretty straightforward, pretty customary, um, I'm sure the planning department can help you guys work with that stuff. Yep, thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you very much. So I'm gonna bring it back to the board. What's your pleasure? Do you have any other questions or feedback that you wanna put out there?
Mr. Chair, while you're waiting on Gwen, I'll just say, I think it's gonna be beneficial to us if we have a site walk and we can, uh, see the site for ourselves and be able to interpret these plans a little better.
Didn't, didn't you walk this with the Conservation Commission already, or not?
No.
No?
No, we, yeah, I've been out, I confuse this, I've been out there a bunch of times, cause this is the sewer easement from the other one with the plantings in the buffer situation.
Right.
And we've walked this site.
Okay.
But for a different reason.
Okay.
And not the entire site with this plan in front of us, we walked it for that sewer easement, uh, that connected over to ninety-eight.
Yep.
So, we have, I mean, I've been out there, but, yeah, let's, let's.
So is the Conservation Commission scheduling a walk, do you know?
I think the young woman went out there, the part, the part-time girl.
Yeah, Kristen, but she's been out there with me, yeah, we've been out there, we know that, but, uh, I don't know.
Are you, do you have a scheduled meeting with them already, or not?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, alright, the reason I'm asking is, cause if we can parallel that walk with them, it's just efficient.
Well, usually the Concom and Kristen comes to me and says, hey, you know, on a site, we try to, you know, double dip, if you will, to, you know, post one
Right.
like she did with the Grissettes, but I haven't heard from her.
Yeah.
I haven't, so I, I'm not sure.
Somebody gets some wrong information or something, and so they had to, that's what held up some of this process.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't heard of any meetings, so I'd go ahead and, maybe you, if, if
We'll schedule.
If you can schedule it, then we can invite them.
Yeah, alright.
Let's do that.
So.
It probably wants to be sooner rather than later, cause once it snows, it gets kinda tricky. Now, how much of this did we walk when we did the site walk on the ninety-eight?
You, you walked?
I have a feeling we walked over into this.
Oh, yeah, you walked, you walked from the, you know, stabilized the end of Patricia.
Yeah.
And you walked into about the start of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I mean.
That was the focus area.
A little deja vu about that.
Yeah, yep. You didn't walk back to see where the drainage detention pond is.
No.
And then for the site walk, if you can have the surveyor just, you know, stake out like the center line of the road, some so, you know, the end of the cul-de-sac, some sort of, couple of markers to get an understand, un-understanding where things are on the site. I mean, I know we have the existing house, that's a good point of reference, showing where the cul-de-sac ends would be good, and a couple of center line stakes, uh, would be beneficial.
So, Dave, alright, what are you anticipating us, uh, continuing this to?
Uh, you know.
Nineteenth?
Huh?
The nineteenth of December?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's getting, that agenda's getting pretty busy, but, um, and I'd ask the applicant to make sure, I, I don't wanna schedule it again, cause we'll continue the public hearing, we won't wanna close that, we want these folks, if they, you know, have further concerns or other people have concerns to come. But I wanna make sure we're, we're not continuing it again, and are you in a position, have you sat, you know, like, are you getting everything?
I go through Barb.
No, no, I know, but, but, we had talked and we expected plans for this submission, and you were getting revised plans. That didn't come to, yeah, they didn't come to fruition, we didn't get them, I just don't wanna keep.
He's saying the beginning of next week is an email that I got, when Bob asked about it, that's why.
Alright, so I just wanna make sure we have, you know, the, they get to the Concom, they get the Concom's recommendations, and then come back to you folks.
You may go into January?
That's what I, you know, it's either the nineteenth or the ninth, but.
So what Dave's trying to say is just, rather than keep dragging this.
Why don't we, why don't we make the decision when they?
Good about, right, that you feel like you're gonna be squared away, there's gonna be enough time to, uh, notify anybody that needs it, we need, we need to have plans, really, at least a week ahead of time.
I'm not happy that they don't have them now.
Yeah, no, I understand. So, are you thinking?
It's either the December nineteenth.
Is that aggressive?
What, yeah.
Um, I don't know, cause like, I, you know, it's all dependent on the applicant and their engineers.
Why don't we do, yeah, why don't we plan on just January?
Okay, alright, that's fine. Cause I mean, I expected them last week.
Well, the only thing is, you don't get a lot of public input, which, you know, when you're an applicant, it's kinda nice, but.
Well, I mean, we did have that, that lady from Patricia Way, who's not here tonight, when we last had this.
No, I think, let's go to January, I think that's the.
Perfect, alright.
Does anybody else wanna put anything else, the applicant, to work on between now and then, that, you know, might be helpful from the board, cause we're at the board.
Are you gonna schedule a site walk?
Yes, we're gonna schedule a site walk. For the ninth. So you, when you guys wanna do that?
Well, if, if I might.
Yes.
Sooner would be better, because if you have any concerns, we can address those.
Yep.
So we don't end up with other incomplete paperwork.
Sure.
Right.
So, I guess, biggest thing, timing-wise, is just getting, like Dave said, getting the roads staked, couple monuments out there, it's not done now, right?
No, I, I can actually put stakes on it, to give you an idea where it is, knowing that.
That's, that's all we basically need, it's just a, some general idea.
So, what do you guys wanna do?
I mean, you can almost see it now, because they have the easement.
One comment that I have is,
Yep.
I didn't cut that lot, I bought it in its present condition.
That's worth saying.
Well, it's, it was done pretty horribly.
So we're probably gonna go after Thanksgiving, right?
What's that first week, what's the week after Thanksgiving?
We can walk right now if you like, I've got a flashlight.
Right now?
Right. Don't be afraid.
I didn't bring my headlamp.
So, December second is a Monday. Is there a better day of the week for you guys and gal?
Thank you for.
I can do the, I can do the sec, I have a, we have a select board meeting, but if we could do it before, let's say six, then I could do it.
Or six at night?
Yeah.
We have to.
No, can you do, can you make it? You working out of town?
On the se, on the second?
Yeah.
I can make it, if you can do it during the day, I'll make it.
During the day?
I'll make it.
Cause it, yeah, daylight is.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll provide, we'll provide lunch.
Is, uh, Friday, the, Friday the sixth an option?
No, we won't.
Friday the sixth is an option.
No, we won't.
I can do any time the sixth, but the rest of the week is shot for me.
Mister Papa Costa Dis, does that work for you?
You said December sixth?
That's what we're talking, that's on the table.
Friday, okay.
This'll be the longest part of our meeting tonight.
What time?
Scheduling the site walk.
Did, did we, uh?
Eight?
Go up.
Are you looking in the morning, eight AM?
Oversight committee meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Uh, I'm gonna have, I have a facilities committee meeting first thing in the morning on the sixth, so it would have to be.
What time is that?
Eight thirty to ten usually.
Okay. Well, we just, I just heard an offer about lunch.
Well, I didn't say it was great.
I had, okay.
Does high noon work? Gwen? Pete?
I, yeah, I'm fairly flexible on the sixth.
I can do that.
Alright, noon?
So noon, okay.
Noon.
Alright, I'll.
David, it sounded alright with you?
Uh, you know, I've been out there many times, I mean, I'll try to get out there, I got a TRC meeting at ten that day, and it's, it's the pretty large gateway project. So, but I should be able to.
Sneak over, maybe?
Sneak over, yeah.
He knows it by heart.
Make an appearance. But as long as everyone agrees on the board, you know, and then I'll have Kristen, you know, we'll be represented, put it that way.
It's not a complicated site.
Nope, nope.
Alright.
Can I ask a question, though, so if we, so we have the site walk on the sixth and, and presumably table this till the ninth of January?
Yes.
Do we know, though, that the Conservation Commission will hear the parties before we meet on the ninth?
Oh, I'd hope so.
Before meeting?
But we don't, you know, it's, it's dependent on things out of our control.
Okay. No, and I say that for just, you know, for that reason, I don't wanna have them come there if.
Well, if that happens, then we're probably gonna have to continue.
Okay.
At that time, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But that's why we went that far out, I think we're trying to accommodate, to get it down. But that's why we went that far out, I think we're trying to accommodate, to get it done.
I don't wanna waste your time, I don't wanna waste their time.
Right. Right. And it is, it is a tougher time of year, uh, to get stuff done, the holidays, but I think that'll work, all right. So, uh, that is a public walk as well, so the public is invited to that? So that's gonna be noon?
You can, I'll walk it with you.
Yeah. Yeah, you can do it another time as well, yeah. Yeah. Perfect. That sounds good.
Basically, we need to set stakes.
Yeah, that's all we need to, you know, it's relatively straightforward, it's not a big piece of property to deal with.
Can we make it a request that um, Mark West is there? Since we're gonna be considering a conditional use permit for wetland buffers and that he can.
The pro, the only problem I see is it, is most of the work has already been done. That's what got us in trouble with the Conservation Commission, well, not, not really trouble, but they went through and they get skipped somehow when they did the ninety-eight London Street. So I just didn't wanna do the same thing to him.
Oh, he was the wetland scientist for?
Uh, no, I think, I think.
Gove was.
It was Gove.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
So, well, I guess the, you know, the functional evaluation that's been submitted to us is Mark West's work.
Yes.
And so we're gonna be deciding whether to grant you a waiver or not based on his work and.
Which came directly from, uh, excuse me, directly from Gove.
So Mark West did not do the wetlands work?
He's, he's presenting, I better, let me not say anything. It's, Mark West is the, the wetland scientist for this project.
Are we, actually, do we have a waiver in front of us?
The plans say wetlands delineation by West. On the.
And, and Mark West, from the materials I reviewed in the application, did the functional evaluation, he responded to Kristen's.
Correct. Yes.
Email or letter.
Yep.
Um.
So, yeah.
So do you want him at the site walk or, or the January ninth meeting, or, I mean, or?
One or the other, I think would be.
Yeah, that's, I'm thinking one probably we. One would be sufficient, but. I'm just asking, you know, you, you know.
I mean, to me, I would.
Would you rather have him at the site walk, or would you rather have him at the January ninth meeting?
I think it'll, the information he presents to us will mean more on the, when we're on the ground, rather than here. That would be. I guess, but I could go either way, it doesn't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking, just so we're clear on, on, you know, that's all.
I guess as long as we, if he, if he's only at the site walk, I think it's upon us to come armed with questions. If that's gonna be our only chance to really ask him specific things, specific details about the plan and.
I don't know, I, I'm pretty uncomfortable with that, so I'm gonna suggest that we don't do that, but ask for him to be at the January ninth meeting that we're continuing your hearing to, so we can um, have a dialogue. Primarily because this is a public process, there are probably many members of the public, that's a good point. They have interest in this project and can't go to a site walk in the middle of the week, in the middle of the day. But might be cognizant of this after the holidays, after the new year flips, that this is happening. Uh, and want, and you can have a much more lengthy dialogue in this environment than you can on the side of the road. We don't know what the weather conditions could be, you know, that's reality, so. But with that being said, I think that specifically the wetlands area where the road is gonna get close to as you enter um, on the opposite of Lot one and Lot two, if you can try to get that delineated potentially by him before we do the site walk.
That's our flag.
Really helpful, is it?
Yeah.
So it's pretty obvious.
Actually, some of their, some of their vegetation was planted in there.
Okay.
And they're working with.
Yeah, is the filth, is the silt fence still there?
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
There's a silt fence, it's flagged.
Okay.
Um, it's pretty obvious where it is.
So we'll be able to figure, overlooking.
Absolutely.
All right. Cuz I just, I think it's, um, unless he's at both, you know, if you're, if you're talking either or, I think he needs to be here in the hearing.
Yeah, I can't speak to his schedule.
Right. And the process of availability, we know one of butter, who's already taken the time to be here, who can't make that hearing. So you would have the opportunity to see the wetland scientist, hopefully, on the ninth of January, you know? I think that's important, so. Thank you, Peter, for bringing that up, though, I think it's helpful to have the uh, experts, especially um, when it's one of the primary, you know, areas of the project that come to mind, other than drainage is probably your, in landscape design, it's probably what I would take for feedback if I were you. Tonight, um, anything else you wanna bring up before we table this?
Can I just, I, I have questions that I would have um, given to the wetland scientist and um, and I'll hold a lot of, I'll hold those for later. Um, are you putting, on one plan, it looks like there's sidewalks on another, it's hard to tell, are you, is that being proposed?
Sidewalks on one side.
On one side, all right. Um, can you just, and if I've overlooked it, um, don't hesitate to correct me, but the legend, in my opinion, is inadequate and it needs to identify the lines for wetland buffers. I mean, I, I, I know that there's a wetland buffer around the um, going into Patricia Avenue, the wetland on the right, but it's not labeled and there isn't anything in the legend that indicates what that dotted line is, just for somebody who's reading it that may not know.
Yeah, that is in fact the wetlands as it is down here.
Right, but it's not labeled, is what I'm saying, so someone could label that, that would be appreciated. Um, I assume you will have a landscape plan? Is that coming?
Now we will.
Okay. That would be good. Landscape plan.
So, I'm, Gwen, I'm trying to follow that comment, though, on page uh, three, sheet three.
Yep. Right here.
You don't think the buffer's labeled?
There's no, there's no.
Forty feet?
There's nothing that says. But there's nothing in the legend that indicates what those lines are.
Okay, I got you, like, there's no lines, no, yeah. So you, so you hear what she's saying, cuz you're, okay, cuz she, so what Gwen is talking about is you've got the forty-foot buffer delineated, but the dashes aren't indicating what they mean, the actual line that it becomes, you follow?
So if someone in the neighborhood is looking at this and doesn't work with these frequently or ever, they won't know what that forty-foot dashed line means.
I'll make sure it's in the note.
Yeah.
Just make sure it's in the legend.
Maybe use a different type of um, line, they look similar to me. The wetlands line looks the same as the buffer line itself, so maybe like a different dash, dot, dash, something, you know? It does make it easier to read. It's a very appropriate comment. Thank you.
Landscape plan. I know that it's primarily cleared, I don't know if there's more clearing, if there is, can you mark on the plan the limit of clearing? I don't know, I, I remember the entrance way and I know that's cleared, but I can't remember.
Unfortunately, almost all of it needs to come down, it's, whoever did it with the tractors were not polite.
Okay. Well, all right.
So I, I guess it's a good time to talk about that landscape plan, just cuz we're not gonna see you for a while. Um, one thing that we are encouraging is some detail on that. Uh, number of trees, you know, types, sizes, that will be helpful, especially in a lot that's uh.
Denued.
Yeah, Ben, I don't know what you wanna call it, I don't wanna be negative.
Abused.
Yeah, okay, I'll let you say it, so um, because that is something that as a board, we're trying to be cognizant of and we're trying to do a little more progressive work there. It also does help uh, retain water as well, all that vegetation, it doesn't have to be anything crazy. Um, I, you know, I know a prior planner had been really knowledgeable and dialed into types of species and things like that, I don't know that we're really giving people that kinda guidance these days, um, but do you do that, Dave?
We have a list.
Yeah, so that would probably be really helpful, I think, given what we're seeing as a process, you know, in terms of questions of people that may not be here tonight on this board that might be here on the ninth as well.
Yeah, we have a list of native, you know, New Hampshire species, the trick is, though, matching them up with the soil types found on the site.
Sure.
So generally, I like to see a landscape architect involved in a landscape plan because, you know, they kinda look at the soils, you know, are they moist, are they, you know, are they sandy, and pick the appropriate vegetation that coincides with that. But I do have, you know, we, we do have information on that.
Yeah, so I, and I do wanna reiterate the, the rain garden part, because um, I mean, I can remember a case a couple of years ago with someone doing a one-lot subdivision and the lot was a significant amount of distance from any butter over a wetlands and we still required that. So I guess I'm just letting you know what we're gonna be looking for to try to facilitate the process. It's not a big requirement, but it does really do a job that helps and we're trying to do a good job with that. Anything else?
Um, I'm just checking to see if you have a lighting plan, I don't know.
You gonna have lights?
Are you gonna have streetlights?
Streetlights on the fire, I think.
I don't see. I don't see lighting.
No, there.
Streetlights, something neighborhood-y.
That's a, always a battle at the TRC, you know, I, I don't need them, uh, other people like them. I just, you know, I mean, we're trying to cut down on, you know, carbon emissions, sustain, you know, trying to be more sustainable and we just keep putting up streetlights at the end of the, you know, dead-end road.
Yeah.
Uh, but anyway, uh, there was a, there was a comment to provide one at the TRC, we haven't got, it's not on these plans, but it was a comment to provide one at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. So of course, if, if that does happen, then you need to see them on a plan.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
But you're asking the person who doesn't even wanna know.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have strong feelings.
Like.
I like darkness, I don't mind that either, but I just wanna see it if it's gonna be.
If someone wants safety in their front yard or something, maybe they can put up a little, you know, a six-foot light, standing light or something to that effect. But I just, you know, I don't see a street, streetlights are usually, I see them as, put them where safety requires them to be, at intersections. You know, you, you're driving down, you know, Court Street, one oh eight, and you got a street intersection, you should have a light there, just to, you know, at nighttime, you know, you can just see an intersection.
Yeah.
Uh, those are the kinda target spots, here, it's at the end of a quiet, you know, dead-end road as it is, so.
Okay.
But they'll, you know. They will, they will, they will provide the detail that they provide, and we would say spec it out as, as the new LED law, you know, same lights we're doing now.
Yep.
That we're retrofitting.
Cul-de-sac needs to be landscaped, that's part of, in our regs, you probably knew that already. Um, lighting, trees, waivers, oh. Personally, I like to see waivers listed in the general notes, if you have waivers, I don't know that that's a requirement, but lots of applicants do that, it's just nice to have as a reference. I don't know if you feel.
I'm fine with either way.
Fine with that either?
Yeah, I mean, usually like it, I like it when they do put them on the final plans, that waivers were granted, you know, and so forth, um, but yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay. Peter, do you have anything you wanna add tonight?
No. I'm not unhappy.
You're not what? Not unhappy?
Yeah, it's a double negative.
So it means you're happy. Mister Papa Costades, you have anything?
I'm ready to move to table.
Ready to move?
Yep.
Peter?
Yep. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Pete and Peter. Pete, repeat.
Repeat.
Okay, I'm open to a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move uh, that the request of IS Realty Trust for a conditional use permit be tabled until January ninth.
And subdivision approval, you can kinda.
And subdivision approval be tabled until the January ninth, two thousand twenty, planning board meeting?
At seven PM.
At seven PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed, any aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? See you then. Need to wake her up. Thank you for coming in.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Have a good holiday, we'll see you uh.
Those, those were extra.
They were.
Yeah, yeah, they were extra in the thing.
You're gonna come by your house and clap.
We got, yeah, we had two extra and.
Yeah. Have a good one, ladies.
Okay, so now, let's see.
Yeah, we asked for a certain amount.
Usually have a couple extra in the file.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for.
Good night. Yep. All right, so although your agenda looks really skinny, we've gotten some new additions. You know, we do nickname David Sharples Columbo. He likes to bring those little things up, just when you thought you were going home.
One more thing.
Yeah, geez, you know. You need a cigar, Dave. So does everybody have the Exeter Station Properties LLC Planning Board Case Number eighteen dash eleven, one Rockingham Street, request for one-year extension of conditional approval? That expires December tenth, two thousand nineteen.
It's a letter from DT, DTC lawyers.
Yes.
Should've been in your packets.
Yes.
There's a big DTC right on it. The applicant's requesting a one-year extension of its conditional approval granted uh, last December sixth, two thousand eighteen, less, a little less than a year ago. Uh, this would be the first um, extension request and they mentioned that they learned that the estimated volume of soil requiring excavation at the site is significantly greater than first projected. This increase in volume of soil not suitable for onsite reuse correlates directly to a significantly graded cross for environmental remediation of the property. Additional time is needed for the applicant to continue exploring site work options and assessing the overall viability of the development is currently approved. So they were asking for an extension uh, until December sixth, two thousand twenty.
Uh, our normal process on this is it's virtually a rubber stamp unless there's something concerning us uh, on a first request. So I'm open to a motion.
Mr. Chair, before we go on, I guess my question would be, are there other engineering aspects of this project that maybe they got wrong, given their soil estimates that we should be concerned about, and I don't, maybe it might be not, not an issue at all, I'm not familiar with this project, but um, you just, it makes you wonder.
No, that's not something we'd ask them during the approval process, how much soil, how much cut and fill that they would have to do? I mean, apparently, they, you know, the, the same to, to build it, you know, to get the grades and everything to work, they're gonna have to take a lot of so, soil offsite.
Okay.
More than they anticipated, that probably wouldn't be something that would even come up in, in the review process.
Okay.
Cuz it's not like, I don't believe there's any contamination issues here that require, oh, you know, we thought only X was contaminated, but I don't believe that was, that was.
No, there was nothing like that.
It's just a cut operation and there's probably no fill, and that's usually, they do the cut and fill balance.
Right.
Kind of as after approval, they kinda get to the nitty-gritty and find tooth to figure out, you know, where we can cut, where we can fill to try to balance the site, but in this case, when they did that exercise, apparently, they're like, uh, we're trucking a ton of site. We're gonna excavate a ton of soil offsite.
And I think that um, Attorney Summers is accurate in her statement, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, when she. when she states in her letter that there have been no intervening changes to the board's site plan review regulations or zoning ordinance that affect the project as proposed. I don't think.
No, the only, uh, site plan amendment was the significant tree and I'm not sure there's a tree on this site. So as it's, I mean, it's in an urban setting, it's right next, you know, i- if, yeah, so that, that doesn't obviously affect it.
And I don't, I mean, I think we've granted these without any explanation as to why they're requesting it either.
Correct. I think they just, they just added that.
They didn't need to.
Yeah, we don't usually ask, at least in the beginning.
I only ask because I'm still in learning mode. That's all.
Yeah.
That's good, good that you did.
Good question.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll take a stab at this, I guess. I move to grant the request, uh, for one year extension for Planning Board Case eighteen dash eleven for the Exeter Station Properties LLC, map seventy-three, lot one seventy-five, one Rockingham Street to one year, December sixth, two thousand twenty.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Indicate if you're in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes five to zero. Okay, the next thing that Columbo handed me was, uh, Linden Woods LLC, FKA ninety-eight Linden Street, Planning Board Case Number eighteen dash zero one, request for a bond release.
Yeah, it's for a modification. Uh, what they originally did is they submitted, which we required, it was a condominium project. So in a condominium project, you, you need to, uh, we need some assurance that all the common improvements will be done. So, but we only require, unless you're going for a C O, we only require a site stabilization bond. What is it gonna take, you know, to go in, clean up the site if it goes, you know, you know, some, you know, if it gets abandoned, if you will, go in, stabilize the site, seed it, and then pull out. And that was a forty-five thousand dollar site and stabilization bond that is in place today. Now, they want to, they wanted a certificate of occupancy for a unit there. And we're like, well, you, you need to bond for any of the common improvements because it's a condo association. So we can't have a co, cause it's, you know, it's down to binder. The road is only to binder. Uh, there's some, you know, some landscaping and some, you know, site work still left to be done. So if a new owner comes in and then something happens, you know, financially to the developer or something and the, and the project gets abandoned, well, now you've got an innocent landowner and the, you know, the recreation area, the whatever, the public improvements that are promised on the plan, there's no way to pay for that. So that's when we come in, we, we won't let anything transfer and it can't transfer without a C O. So they want a C O. We estimate, they came back, said, this is what's left. They estimated, we went back and forth, uh, with Allison Underwood Engineers, Allison Reese are onsite inspector. Uh, she verified what was left and, and then Jen Mates and, uh, Allison both agreed that the requested LOC amount is adequate to cover the remaining site work and recommends approval of this request. So it would be removing the forty-five thousand dollar site restoration bond, but replacing it with a letter of credit, an irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred and two dollars.
For completion? Not stabilization, completion of the project.
Correct, correct. A whole different story.
And then?
Yes.
The town can issue an occupancy permit?
Correct.
So what is the, um, factor? So, uh, what's the multiplier that the town uses in terms of actual cost versus a buffer, a contingency? Is it one point two five? What you guys think it'll really cost, do you know?
They, we, we just, in our regs, I believe it's just, I can't remember that one off the top of my head, cause every place I've been has different ones. You know, some do a hundred and ten percent, some do a hundred percent.
In the back. Think a ten percent?
Retainage, uh, yeah, plus the, the town shall retain sufficient funds with current costs to complete the remaining improvements, uh, plus a retainage of twenty percent of the original amount.
Okay.
And then in circumstances when a cash bond, not less than a hundred and ten percent of the cost to complete the improvements. So there's a couple of different ones and then maintenance guarantees are a little bit different. So in this case, it would be a hundred and ten percent. So one point one. That's what our regs say.
So that's the, uh, the worksheet that Jones and Beach is providing?
Yeah, and they have the ten percent contingency built in it for seven thousand.
Yep. Okay.
I don't see irrevocable anywhere. Where, where is that?
That's in the motion that I'm gonna give you.
Oh, that's why I don't see it.
Good catch. In the motion I wrote. I mean, it's in our regs.
Yeah, okay.
So we just got this tonight. Are you guys comfortable? And lady?
As long as it's irrevocable. I would not be comfortable on an open ended.
And there's a few more stipulations in our ordinance as well. Like it has an automatic call. It has to be a letter of credit. Letter of credit is just like cash. There's no bond in New Jersey where, you know, good luck calling it. I mean, it's, to get a letter of credit, it's almost like you have to, you have to have the cash in the bank and the bank won't let you touch it and they give the letter of credit and they have the cash. And if the town comes in and wants it, they just bring that letter of credit handed on the table and it gets drawn. So it's a very easy process. A little more expensive than a bond, but, you know, that's.
Cost of doing business.
Yes, and we, we have to be assured.
Yep.
Any future owner doesn't get left, you know.
Right.
Holding the bag.
Cause they can also put up cash.
They can, they are. We can't require cash, but we will take it, yes.
Cash is king.
Cash is still king, but irrevocable letter of credit, we require those.
Queen.
Yes, queen, cause we can't require the king. So I do have a motion if someone wants to make it. I move to approve the release of the forty-five thousand dollar site stabilization bond and replace with an irrevocable letter of credit as specified in our regulations. Be approved with the condition that the town does not release the bond until receiving the irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred and two dollars in a form approved by the town planner.
That's fine. That addresses my concern.
Does someone want to turn that into a motion?
Well, he just read it.
I know, but he can't make.
Someone could say so moved.
So moved, yeah.
Okay. Second, somebody?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes five to zero. And Columbo's been a busy boy, so he's got more. Uh, I've got in front of me E C V Enterprises Inc., Planning Board Case Number two one six one two, twenty-two Industrial Drive, request for extension of conditional approval expired July two thousand eighteen.
This one was a pretty odd one. I mean, it's a new one and I didn't know what to do with it. So I said, well, I would suggest, you know, writing a request to the planning board, uh, and seeing what they say about it. Because what this gentleman di- uh, did, that he came before the board back in two thousand sixteen. He got a conditional approval for a thirty thousand square foot warehousing office building expansion on twenty-two Industrial Drive. And then immediately thereafter, they had some, they had one of the tenants that was their major tenant. I think they left and, and then, so the addition didn't go, you know, then they came in, they asked for an extension. Uh, they asked for two extensions and they were extended until July twenty eighteen. And then he was told, he, he claims in his letter, in July two thousand eighteen, I called the town to inquire about what was necessary to extend the approvals again. Uh, cause I believe Christian Smith, his engineer, did it previously. Then he takes it upon himself to do it. And he drafted, he said, I would be, uh, you know, I was told to mail a letter to the planning board and if there are any issue, I'd be contacted. See attached letter sent in July twenty eighteen. He said he sent this letter. In August, he drafted a letter of extension and called the town, uh, last, just this past.
August of which year?
This year.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, so he's, he says he sent the letter July twenty eighteen.
And he followed up thirteen months later.
Then he follows up thirteen months later, sends another letter and, you know, asking for another extension. We did not receive either of these letters. Barb hasn't received them. We didn't get them.
Okay.
Uh, so he's like.
So we have an expired approval.
Correct.
We have had zero communication from the property owner until now. And we have no property owner in front of us to attest to what he's putting in writing in front of us. So, um, I would either deny this or tell him to come and back before us. I don't think, I'm not feeling good about extending this.
I think that's fair of you, Mr. Chair, but I think given the fact that the, you know, sense of urgency is thirteen months.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we asked him to come, is that what, in another fourteen months or, I mean, I, you know.
Well.
Well, I'm not saying I would approve it based on him coming. I'm saying I'm definitely not approving it without.
No, I, I understand.
Just, just to understand, this is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, he's saying that he sent it in, in July twenty eighteen. And he, he said, you know, uh, that, that, and was told to mail a letter to the planning board and if there was any issue, he would be contacted. So he's claiming he sent a letter in July twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, asking for a year extension. Then he's not contacted. He doesn't follow up. I mean, you know.
But typically, yeah, I understand what he's saying.
He's saying he believed he was fine for another year.
But he would have missed the deadline anyway.
Then in August, yeah, he remembers a month later than he thought he was, you know, than his, you know, his extension went.
He remembered thirteen months later instead of eleven, after the last.
One month later. Well, in his mind.
No, cause you said the letter was mailed in July of eighteen and he followed up in August of nineteen, so that's thirteen months.
No, no, he followed up, he submitted, he says he submitted another request for an additional year cause he thought he was already, he had sent a letter the year before.
In August, he did that?
Correct.
So he did one, he did a letter July two thousand eighteen and a letter August two thousand nineteen that the Exeter Post Office apparently wasn't doing their job. Correct, okay.
Can I ask just a question of procedure?
Well, that.
Typically, when people mail these, do they mail them certified mail? Is that a norm or, is, I know if I were sending something.
No, and, and generally, a lot of times we get these hand delivered or, uh, you know, sent via email as a PDF or both. We generally don't get them via mail.
So if you ever had.
And if we do, I, I don't know if we get them certified.
If you ever had an instance where somebody, you know, claims that they mailed a letter and then they didn't hear back, they wouldn't, do you typically get a follow-up phone call or a visit or something or?
I've never heard of it.
That's a little bit, you know, closer to thirteen months?
Yeah, no, I've never even experienced it before and I didn't really know what to do and he kept asking for the planning board and I'm like, well, I can't stop you from asking the request from the planning board. So, cause they kept asking us and I was like, well, let's bring it to the planning board, see what they say. So I can certainly do one of, you know, one of two things. I can let him know your decision or let him know he has to come at the, at, at a future meeting, but, and explain himself or whatever you'd like to do.
I mean, what more is he gonna tell us? Than what he said here? Or it's gonna be like one of these fellows, oh, I just remembered.
No, that's Columbo. That's our planner. He does that.
No, 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 but I mean.
What are you gonna remember, Dave?
Yeah, what used to be for him to come in.
Yeah, I mean, what, what.
Well, I guess my point is I might be more sympathetic if he took the time to be here. That's my point by saying that.
That's fine, that's fine.
I think.
You mean tonight?
Yeah.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, um.
I, I will tell you, I'm not inclined to go forward with this.
I think we have deadlines on our approvals for a reason.
Yeah.
And we have a process for extensions for a reason.
Which he didn't meet.
He didn't meet it.
Well, he says he did.
The burden is on him.
I think so.
The burden's not on the town.
And I don't see what more he's gonna come in with to convince us.
Right.
And our stormwater regs did change since then.
And he didn't feel compelled to be here personally. That's his choice.
Sorry. We also require different, I mean, usually we do an analysis after a few years, cause this would be, you know, essentially the, the fourth year.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, and our stormwater regs changed. Uh, they are stricter. They are more geared toward groundwater recharge and, uh, infiltration practices and water quality focused than just water quantity. So
That's significant.
This, this would, this, I, I would think unless it triggered AOT then. If that triggered AOT, they might be okay. Under our regs, but our regs did change. So I don't, they might have triggered AOT, but anyway.
Yeah.
Our, our regs have changed since then.
And there's argument then he's under the old regs.
Yeah, unless he did AOT, which is very similar. So if he met AOT four years ago, he's, he's gonna meet our current. You know, cause that's why, a lot of the reason why we did it is a lot of our projects were like, had to meet this higher threshold if they're over a hundred thousand. If they're under, they get the benefit of, of less, you know, uh, stormwater requirements. And it was like, well, why does that make sense, you know? It's disturbing ninety thousand and we're an MS four community and stormwater is, is definitely an issue. Uh, so we just make everyone do, you know, groundwater recharge and, and promote infiltration and so forth now, so.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Dave, he wrote the letter on October thirtieth and we received it about two weeks later. Um, on the fourteenth at that time, was he made aware that this would be on the agenda tonight? I mean, to Mr. Chair.
I'm assuming that's not what I do. That's what Barb does. And she usually tells everyone that, you know, when things are on the agenda for their FYI, but I, I can't say for sure.
No, presumably so, but I'm just saying before, you know, here we are picking on the lack of urgency here and me, to be fair, me not.
Yeah, that's true.
No, understood. I just, I don't know. I don't know if, um.
I guess I would say, um, from my experience, having done some work in the land use world, understanding when your permits are expiring is a pretty critical management uh, requirement of a property owner, not the town. Uh, and I don't see that here. So from my perspective, I think you got an expired permit that didn't just expire. This isn't somebody who, oh, shoot, a month went by, you know? This is a couple of years. I don't know that I want to say the guy didn't send the letters that he's saying he did, but it's still his responsibility to make sure they get where they need to get.
There's a clear lack of follow-up.
Yeah.
Repetitively, I think.
Right, so.
I agree.
And with the changes in the town regulations that Dave just brought up, um, and the fact that this has been a while, I think I'd have a hard time voting in favor of, I guess, are we being asked, yeah, we're getting, being asked to extend the conditional approval, I'd be, I'd have a hard time approving that.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even think you would need to deny it.
Okay.
Because it's already.
Expired by.
It's already expired, so by taking no action means the same thing. I mean, unless you were inclined to do so, but I, I wouldn't even.
Only because if we do so, well, why? Why not?
Because it's expired.
But if we, if you brought it before us, we're discussing it, if we give him the feedback that we're denying, I guess we don't have to do it formally, is what you're saying.
That's what I, yeah, exactly.
But if we don't, if we don't do something. But if we don't, if we don't do something, does it come, can he keep coming back for, I mean, let's just close it, I mean.
That's why I.
I mean, can someone keep writing a letter to the board?
If we take action and say we deny it.
Okay.
If you want that approval, we.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm okay with that, I just, you know, I, I it's sometimes it opens the door, like, maybe not in this case.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, like, it's like, you know, it's, it's an action that's appealable and, you know, and it's like, well, it's not appealable because it was an, it's been expired for two years. So you're not denying an extension, it, it was already voided out two years ago. You know what I'm saying? But, but that's fine, if you wanna do it in this case, I'd be comfortable with that. Some, sometimes I wouldn't be, like, you know, why open up something that's subject to.
So what is, how does the board feel about it?
It being.
Do you prefer to take action or let this die on the vine and maybe see it again?
It seems to me if this is expired. Isn't that the end?
It can be, and that's what we'll relay, I mean, they'll get a letter from us saying, you know, the planning board uh, determined that, you know, they, they, you know, somehow, you know, you didn't take action on the request because the is expired and are not inclined to grant it after the fact extension. You know, that's something to that effect, that's, I mean, I'd let them know.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, I think we hang our hat, if you will, on the fact that the thing expired.
Yeah, absolutely.
We didn't do anything to cause it to expire. It wasn't something we did or didn't do. By the operation of the, of the, of the process, it, it's, it's done, I mean, I, I'm and I think we need to tell him that.
Oh, yeah, we'll tell him that. Yeah, we'll, we'll relay that to him in a letter.
Die on the vine?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it, it.
Let's move on.
And then that might give him the opportunity if he has other proof or, you know, he has something else or has a desire to come before you, then, you know, he, he can do that, but.
Well, is, is this fellow knowledgeable or is he naive?
He's got a professional engineer. Got plans approved through us that I personally have respect for, um, so I think he's got the support that he needed to do it the right way. Maybe they don't have a relationship anymore, I don't know, of course, but they did have one.
What's the date of that?
September twenty third, two thousand sixteen.
That's three years.
Yeah, man.
I, I, I still think it's, it's dead.
It is dead.
It is.
Why are you still talking about it?
Well, because you keep bringing.
No, I didn't, I said move on. Trying to poke the bear.
He's been pushing me around.
Been too good a night.
It was worth the extra two minutes.
All right, so. Master plan?
Yeah, thank you.
This is, ew, this is revised from what we have.
Revised that she emailed out the other day. But he said he would bring a hard copy. So David, do you wanna lead the charge in this initially or do you want?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
The master plan, uh, oversight committee has has been described in the last, you know, meeting as well, we, we've been meeting quite a bit, we had the fourth meeting uh, in almost as many weeks this morning. And after the first three meetings, the committee asked for so, a, a new draft based on the discussions to date and a planning, we received a a planning board member sent some comments in to me via email. So this is the new draft that represents, uh, the discussion to date. And it has some cleanups, some editorials, um, some, some edits like you know, grammatical and so forth, not grammatical, but just kinda some cleanup, some ambiguous language that we wanna clear it up, uh, not changing the intent. Biggest thing was we added some provisions about the affordability, uh, the component like what is affordable, how does it get recorded, who monitors it and so forth, what's the sale price, so we went a little deeper, dug a little deeper into that, we provided a to make sure that these places stay affordable and are being, uh, rented by people that meet certain income eligibility. And they're not just affordable and then whoever can, whoever gets to them first gets it, cause that's not the point of affordable housing, it's not just to have an affordable, uh, you know, rent, monthly rent, but also rent them to folks making, you know, eighty percent or less of the, uh, you know, median income. So basically, well-to-do folks don't just get a cheap apartment. So we did that, and also the committee was concerned about architectural standards. And we added, I, I relayed that and they added some, uh, a little more detail, they talk about fen- uh, the fenestration, windows, mullions, uh, kinda talk about that, talk about roof, uh, roofline forms, they talk about dormers and so forth, and if you're going with a, a pitched roof, you need dormers, if you go with a flat roof, you need you know, variations in height to, to really break up, uh, the design. So I asked them, one of the biggest questions was, you know, where have you used these before, these architectural standards? Cause Horsley Witten Group's a pretty big firm, I'm sure they didn't, you know, just come up with, you know, they've used, I was like, have you used, you know, they created, they said they created these, I think in you know, several years ago, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. They said several communities have adopted these, but one particular community, I think he said, I forget what the name of it was, but it was in Rhode Island. He said had several projects that went under these architectural evaluation, uh, uh, you know, standards. And he said he'll, when he comes to the meeting on December twelfth, he'll have some illustrations of the, or pictures of those actual projects. They kind of got, you know, they're not, there's, there's a lot of flexibility in this design, but it'll give you a good idea of what, you know, what these standards. Cause we wanted really strong, you know, strong, good standards where kind of New England style character, uh, comes out in these places while still allowing architectural flexibility. And I think it's got some nice pictures and so forth, so. Uh, that's it in a nutshell, but where, our timeline, again, I'll, I keep, I'll keep mentioning it, December twelfth, we have the night of review of this. We're just kinda talking about the zoning amendments, it's not a public hearing, it's for the planning board to discuss. And, and, and Horsley Witten's gonna come and do a presentation on this that evening. Then, if everything's fine and the language is correct, no one will want, that doesn't result in any changes to this language, any substantive changes, the board could vote to hold a public hearing, and you have to vote to hold a public hearing uh, by January first and hold your first hearing by the thirteenth. And we would post it for the ninth. If there is changes, if the board does have changes to this document on the twelfth, we still have December nineteenth. And I already told Horsley Witten that and he's gonna be ready in the event after that, he's gonna be at that twelfth meeting. He'll be able to turn something around, get us revised language by the nineteenth, and then you could vote to hold a public hearing on January ninth at that point and still be on the timeline for the March warrant. So that's how it's, so, just, you know, take a look at it, if you haven't read it, everyone, you know, take a read, if you have any comments, you know, you can let us know at any time. Uh, Lang, the chair, showed up to the master plan oversight committee this morning. We've gotten an email from another planning board member, so it sounds like everyone, a lot of people are, you know, diving into it and looking at it, cause we wanna be in a position where we don't wanna be in a position where we're gonna scramble later and try, you know, if everyone likes the idea, and I think everyone does, seems to agree with the idea, cause we've, you know, told about what this means, uh, at several meetings. Um, but we'd like to stay on track to try to get it in front of the voters in, in March. And that was the goal with the grant as well.
And actually, Dave, um, you left on time from the meeting this morning, but the committee stayed a little bit longer. And, uh, we did schedule our next meeting, so I wanna make sure that works for you.
Oh, good, I I was gonna send out an email.
Scheduled for December thirteenth at eight AM.
Even though that's Friday?
Even though it's Friday, after they come, yep.
After?
After they come.
Okay, we're all set for that then?
Next week. You know?
Well.
And we thought after they come because you got that window of time.
You don't wanna meet at the mall on Black Friday?
Nah, thanks. Unless you think it's necessary for us to meet again before then, but we didn't think it was.
You didn't, okay.
I don't think so.
I mean, we met four ti- you know, we, we've met, gone over quite a bit, so yeah, that works for me.
If that changes, we can always communicate and schedule something else, but that, that meeting we scheduled. So that does work for you.
That works for me, eight AM, right?
Eight AM, yep.
Okay, perfect.
So we figured if we had the pres- presentation from them the night before and then we meet, then if there's anything that we need to kinda run around with, we could help spearhead that right away. To, to make that next meeting. Which, you know, that was the thinking.
Uh, Dave, do you want, so I have a, I've been working through, I've been taking the board's advice to sit with this and um, and not do it all at once, and I have a, a markup and I guess, uh, I'm wondering how best to provide comments at this point, is it to just bring them to the meeting on the twelfth or do you wanna?
I would suggest either if you wanna explain it, just give me a call, send me an email, let's set up a meeting and go over the comments, or you can send them to me, I mean, however you want, get them to me as soon as you can.
Did you send a PDF? Can you send a Word document so I can track changes in it?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think I did send a PDF.
I think you did.
But I have.
This week, yeah.
Cause then sometimes, you know, I don't want too many versions out there, but I, I will send one to you, then you can send it back to me and I'll isolate that and see, see what you changed, yeah, and, and send that on, sure, I will, I will email that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else on master plan stuff?
I don't think so.
Did you have any questions about it? Anything want to discuss about it tonight at all?
Well, it's, um, I can send what I have. Then we can discuss it or whatever.
Yeah.
Appropriate.
Okay. All right, um, so I have town planner ad- items, any, uh, field modifications or announcements, Dave?
Uh, yeah, just one, you know, you know, we keep working on a lot of the master plan goals, I mean, obviously the M-TAG grant and this, this, um, what I just explained, this amendment for the mixed use neighborhood, uh, development is, is consistent with that, but just wanna let you know, I'm submitting for, uh, a sustain, there, there's a lot about climate change and addressing, you know, uh, what we can do. And a big thing on that is greenhouse gas inventory. And we have not done one, uh, and it's, and it's really a good baseline to start about getting an understanding of where you're at, where you're at with energy use and municipal operations. You can either do one municipal operations or townwide, townwide gets very tricky because, you know, where do you get that data and how do you know how many miles people drive and so forth, and it's very intensive, so. We're gonna start out, uh, there's a, a UNH Sustainability Institute has a, um, has a fellowship program. And they offer fellows for the summer. And the applications due December second, I'll be submitting a, a proposal to get an intern to conduct a greenhouse gas inventory in the summer of twenty twenty.
Great.
So, just wanted to, you know, let you know that, you know, that's to tackle part of the master plan, you know, the, the the work continues to keep going and, and, uh, knocking off the goals and objectives listed in the master plan.
Can I ask a quick question for you, Dave?
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm, this is gonna seem really random, but at the entrance to the town forest, there's that building, is it C three I, on the industrial park side of the and they still have, um, the erosion silt socks out there? Is there a requirement that once that site is stabilized, that they're supposed to remove their erosion controls?
Yeah, I'll revisit that because the specs on that were biodegradable and they claim that, that, like, that, that mesh.
The blacks silt sock that's filled with mulch.
Uh, the black silt sock and there is that mesh stuff too. It was all supposed to be biodegradable and it doesn't seem to be going anywhere.
No, and I just, I, I mean, the site seems stabilized, it's been constructed for a couple of years and it would be nice to get that stuff out of there since it doesn't seem to be going away on its own.
Yeah, that duly noticed, I mean, a lot of times, sometimes when we go out, it's like the CO, we issue the CO, but it's not full, you know, you don't wanna take this, uh, uh, usually if it's established, I'll make them take it out right there. But a lot of times it's like, eh, you know, it's, especially with that trail, I think they had some erosion issues there and kept putting it back, but I'll, I'll make sure, uh, I'll, I'll have them remove it.
Are there any other, uh, committee activity reports anybody wants to bring forward rather than, aren't we still missing somebody?
Housing committee, we met last week. Dave, you were, when you were up north.
Oh, yeah.
And we had a presentation by a Peter Frances- Francesi on basically, um, the thrust being that there, that single family developments are not overburdening the school system, which is apparently something that, not necessarily here, but elsewhere in the state. Uh, this is, um, being used as a, um, as a reason for not thinking. Planning boards are.
What, I don't follow.
Well, it was, it was a presentation.
Yeah.
And this man has made this presentation before.
Yeah.
And is well-known, I had not known who he was. But he has been, uh, with presentations here in town.
Yeah.
I believe.
And he's saying that single families don't burden the school?
Yeah.
And you're saying?
No, no, I'm not saying anything at all, all I'm doing is saying he made that presentation.
Okay.
The committee didn't do, didn't do anything with this.
Okay.
Other than hearing.
Okay.
And there is some information that, that, um, is out, um, some of it pertinent, some of it not so pertinent. Um, I did not know the gentleman, so that I was um, having to listen more carefully. Um, but it at least was, it, it, it was a presentation and I thought helpful to the committee. Now, the committee did, did nothing with it other than to hear it. So that's, that's, that's a non-report, but nonetheless.
Yeah.
At least lets you know that, that the housing committee is, is focusing on that along with a whole bunch of other things, which are all in process, how about that?
We still have somebody that needs to replace. I don't know, you're right there tonight, you know?
What are you gonna do now?
Somebody has to be appointed, I think, to the, one of those committees, right? The one you used to be on?
Yes.
What's it called?
Having done it once now.
Oh.
No, I know, it, it's, we're, somehow, we need, we ought to.
We gotta do something, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not fair to them.
Right, it's not, we're not fulfilling our obligations.
Well, I guess we should have straws.
Something's.
And everybody takes a straw.
Well, I, I just still say who's not here tonight, but, you know. Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Patrick Gordon, um, I'm actually the chair of the Historic District Commission.
Did you give him a text message, Dave?
He'd been hiding. No, but it is, um, yes.
One more thing.
Having a planning board member, um, as an appointee on our board would be extremely helpful. We have one more meeting of a regular member and he's then relocating to Vermont, so we're actually gonna go down another, uh, member. I've already told him that he's not allowed to leave until he replaces himself. Um, but, uh, yes, we will be down to three? We'll be, we'll be down to three plus, uh, our select winner, Kathy. Um, at that point, and we're a board, we, we should be a board of five with alternates. Um, and so, in the past, I think it, uh, our last representative, regular representative was Nicholas Gray.
Yes.
And prior to Pete, thank you Pete for your, for your help.
But it's been several months now.
It's been five or six, I think I wanna say. And it, it is a struggle, I mean, just given people's holidays and, and vacation time, if they're not present for a meeting nor they're. if they're not present for a meeting, nor their work travel takes them out, uh, out of town, the night of the meeting, it's been hard to find, make sure we have a quorum.
Right.
So, um, yeah, that was my, my formal request, if you guys can find it in your hearts to appoint someone to that role.
When you seem moved by a young man's impassioned speech.
By it, I just can't take on anymore, I'm like, well, Nick, you, well, you, they already have a select board rep, but I just.
So you're down, app, you know, notwithstanding the planning board, uh, representative, how many, how many more do you need just to serve?
Uh, we need four, um.
So you need one more, you need one more person?
Well, we should have four outside of me, as a, as a.
So you need two more people outside of a planning board rep?
Yes, uh, we, we should have a quorum of four.
Okay.
Um, we have had three.
You have se, it's a seven-member board?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we should have a quorum of three.
Okay.
Um, plus the, the chair, uh, so that the chair does not have to vote.
Right, right, right.
So, we, we are a board of five, um, and we have struggled to find that, um, fourth person outside of me. In the event that we only have three and I'm there, then I do
Right.
Vote, but, um, it's, you know.
So if I begin the recruiting process, how often do you meet?
Every third Thursday.
Okay.
Have them every month, yeah.
Oh, oh, every third Thursday.
Let's start looking. All right, I felt your schedule freeing up.
Oh, look, I can't, Nancy will strangle.
And Pete's already put his time in, so.
But I mean, it, I, I, I shared.
We sent, has anyone sent on an email to the whole board, asking them, cause it seems like we bring it up every meeting, but does everyone know that we're looking for one?
I think so.
I think people probably immediately put that in their different email box.
It's, uh, it's definitely been discussed, and I think.
Well, I know, but it's never, there's never ev- everyone here when it's discussed, it's like three or four, four or five people, you're always mentioning, oh, who's whoever not here, and does everyone know? I mean, maybe we should do that, maybe I'll.
I, I think that might be a good idea, yeah.
When's your next meeting?
We have one tonight.
You have one tonight?
Downstairs, yeah, so, the next actually is the nineteenth, the nineteenth, uh, because of the holiday.
That's where.
We, we have a nineteenth meeting, so.
Yeah, so, was that always the case, that you met the same time?
No.
Not always.
No, we do second and fourth, we do second and fourth, just Thanksgiving and Christmas. Yeah. Screwed it up, so we're doubling down with the HTC.
Yep.
So, then I think that the solution would be to have Colombo send out aggressive notifications regarding the duties of the planning board.
One of which is to.
One is really to try to be on a committee outside of the planning board, cause the planning board, uh, does is active on many committees.
Yeah, no, I know.
As a board, and I think alternates are eligible, correct?
I believe so.
Well, Nick was.
Yeah, right, right.
I believe so.
And we have a pretty full board, if you include our alternates.
We do.
I mean.
Yes.
So.
We do.
Maybe we should figure out as a board, who's on a committee and who's not.
Could I send out the email? And include the, the, you know, barring someone volunteering, the board will appoint someone on December nineteenth meeting, or something like that, to let, put everyone on notice that you're gonna either, someone's either gonna step up, or you're just gonna appoint a member.
I guess the, the extra added pressure is that we are regulatory board, so we're not advisory.
Right.
So if we can't hold a meeting, cause we don't have a quorum, then applicants get pushed, and that's not doing a service to, to the town.
No, it's a, it's a responsibility, I mean, we are, we are a, uh, it's a, it's a duty of the board, of the planning board, to fulfill that obligation, you shouldn't even have to be here, frankly. Appreciate you coming, it's, I mean, I just remembered that we needed to discuss this again.
Well, we discussed that.
So it was nice that you're here, appreciate it.
And you don't wanna, you don't wanna play that push, uh, with the HTC, cause it's very, uh, specific state statutes on when you have to approve, you know, generally, you know, so.
Yes.
Sometimes if you don't have a quorum, I mean, if, if applicants are willing to wait a couple of months, but they don't have to, you know, like, they can.
Sure.
It, it does, it's not a good thing, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, too, is the transparency between the boards, it, it's, that, they're, they're a representative for you
Right.
At our meeting, to do the information exchange.
Yeah.
When we may have sensitivity to something that might be a massing issue, or a holistic issue in terms of building shape, size, or lot coverage that impacts a parking decision, or otherwise, um, then that, that should be shared information back and forth, and, and many times, we have applicants trying to understand what comes first, the chicken or the egg, do I go to planning board first and get my parking approved, and then come to you guys and say, I can't fit the proportions of what you're asking me to do, because I have to fit, you know, twelve parking spaces. There's that information exchange that is imperative to having that representative.
Yeah, Dave, I think, is it, do, do you guys think we should ask Dave to send that out, the email to the board?
Yeah.
And maybe include in that what your typical meeting dates, like if it's the third Thursday, maybe, maybe give some specifics about.
Do you meet every month?
Every month.
Every month.
Every month we have an application, which is, it's been eleven out of twelve.
Okay.
Or, not twelve yet, not twelve yet.
Particularly disturbing.
Should I include?
They don't have a, they don't make a quorum one night.
Yeah, then they can't take any action.
They can't take any action, and had we a member, had we a representative, they could have taken action.
Right.
Correct.
That's very troubling, I think.
Which, and in the past, when Nicholas was a member, um, he would, he would make a conscious decision between, you know, do, I need to, he preferred to be at planning board, uh, meetings, but when they landed on the same night, if he knew that we were in jeopardy of not having a quorum, he would come down.
Well, I can remember more than one time.
Yeah.
Having to climb the stairs and run down the stairs and climb the stairs.
Right.
But it, it probably this, the time when we had to move our meetings.
Right.
As we often do in November and December.
Right, right. Yeah, I don't think it typically would conflict.
So should I mention in the email about, you know, the planning board will have to appoint someone?
It's a duty of the planning board, yeah, I think you have to.
Otherwise, the, you know, the planning board is prepared to appoint someone.
Right.
I won't put a date on it, but I'll just, you know.
Well, I think we're derelict.
Yeah, I'm, yeah. Sometimes it's tough when you make committees and people are volunteer fearing for a position, and then you're saying, okay, you're, thanks for volunteering, now you're volunteering on other boards, so sometimes it's, 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 it's tough, it's tough, but
But I would suggest.
Doesn't sound like you can even fill the other positions as well.
It's, it's difficult, too, yeah, I mean, we're recruiting, most of, everyone on the board currently is either a licensed architect, or a, um, uh, historic preservationist, in, in some form or fashion. So, th- those specific, uh, I guess, uh, experiences or educations are often, there's that prevalent or that many that are around, so I think it's less, people are less likely to volunteer for that type of board.
The rest of them are on the facilities committee, which I sit in on, so.
Yeah.
And we're, we're losing Greg, too.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Greg's gonna be a loss.
I will send out that email.
Well, I mean, you gotta, maybe you gotta space up your meetings.
Oh, you haven't been to one, I.
Provide food.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, thanks again, thanks for coming, we'll put out an impassioned plea, uh, and, you know, try to get on track with our duties, because I think it's beyond negligence, where we're at now. Cause, I mean, and Nick didn't just bail, he gave us notice also, so it's really not his issue, he, uh, did the best he could, I know he did, and he struggled with that for a while, scheduling wise, um, and then just his schedule hasn't permitted, I know, he expressed that to us a couple of months before he was expecting not to be able to come to your meetings anymore, cause he's had trouble making ours, you know, that's just a change of life, so, um.
We tried to tell him he had to appoint someone.
He tried, he did try, I can attest to that, he tried. But we did the same thing, we said, you can't leave, like you said, you can't leave until you replace yourself, right, that's the way it should be, I mean, that's, we didn't know that when you joined, but you should know when going out.
Unwritten, um, uh, one other pe- piece that I wanted to ask you guys about, and they can, uh, you tell me when it's appropriate to add to an agenda, but something in terms of, we talked about at all boards meetings, um, uh, is information exchange between regulatory boards, in the sense that, you know, why is the historic, why is the Historic District Commission actually important in town, why is it actually a regulatory board? How's it impact your, um, decisions, and, um, just that information exchange, we talked about doing, and just hasn't been done, so I'd love to give that presentation.
Okay.
Um, to come in and kind of present a little bit about our guidelines and our process, and, um, help inform the board, not just the appointee, but, you know, the board, the board as a whole, so, let me know when that would be a good time.
The agenda looking. Well, when Colombo gives you that one, you get worried.
Yeah, we got, well, we have this five lot, we got the other five lot on Brentwood, we got, um, the two hundred and seventy-four unit, mixed use, uh, submitted yesterday. Um, I'm forgetting another one, oh, there's a, I mean, a small one, but a parking lot expansion at the Volvo site, that was at T R C this morning, um, and there's another one in on the way, and we have zoning amendments. So, on the twelfth, so the nineteenth is getting busy, the ninth is pro, you know, getting busy, so it probably looks like.
Why don't we say February?
January, February, yeah, like, you know, barring more coming in, but.
I won't, I, I won't.
Getting a little busy again.
I won't bring food, but I'll make sure that it's a, it's a decent.
Exciting.
So why don't you just, why don't you reach out to me and we'll get, you know, and then we'll always put, you know, we'll put them first on the agenda, so they can, you know, do their presentation right at seven.
So, can you do me a favor?
Sure.
Um, it was actually actually Dave, but thank you, uh, can we add to our agenda under master plan discussion? Appointing, appointing a member to the Historic District Commission from the planning board on our agenda? For the next meeting, for us to discuss that, even though I know you're gonna send an email, yeah. Can we just add that to the agenda, just to be discussed, to make sure we discuss it at that meeting? I think we are doing a pretty good job anyway, but let's just get it on our agenda till we get it fulfilled.
That's all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy.
Okay.
Thanks for coming over. So, unless there's anything else, and I'm really not looking at Dave while I say this.
I actually have a question. Well, I think it pertains to what we've been just talking about for this, and that is that we do have some members who aren't here and haven't been, and, and so we have, in my mind.
Elections and everything, when does that all happen, appointments?
It's in May.
It's in May?
Right, May first, or is it?
Appo, election of officers?
Of officers.
All that stuff.
Yeah, election of officers.
We revisit that in May.
Yeah.
Okay.
The election of who, the chair and the.
Right.
But, but, people ex, we expire, we all have.
Yeah, but it's all staggered, it all depends on your, well, sometime, it's all depends on when you got appointed.
Started, how many years?
Exactly, three-year appointment, so, you know, if you get appointed, so it's, it's kind of ongoing.
But is it the same month or not? Is it all really ongoing throughout the year, different years?
I can pull the fi, I, I have a.
Think you have it online.
I have a sheet that shows when everyone uh, appointed and expires.
Okay.
So, I think it's on the website, too.
I think it is, yeah.
Pretty sure it is.
I, I wouldn't say when it is, but.
Okay, go ahead, what?
Well, I, you know, when we worked on the planning board rules and procedures, that was something that it, it's mentioned in that, I know we were chastised by a member of the select board probably a year or two ago, for not having people be more diligent about attending meetings, it was something that came up, and you know, the, the comment was that, you know, if you're, if you've signed up to be on a board, you should be here, and of course, there are times when you can't, but you should make every effort, and I just feel, if, I mean, we have, we probably technically have a full board, but, but there are people who don't come, and now it's, now in, in light of what has happened, um, with them looking for somebody to, looking for a planning board representative to be on the Historic District Commission, we don't, I mean, now it's, it's upon those of us who are here all the time, and
I know, Lang does not do a very good job of making these meetings, I was just thinking that, right? Sorry, I couldn't.
Just, just.
Lang misses like one meeting every five years.
I'm uncomfortable saying this, cause I feel like the rat, but I also feel like it's
No, you're right.
It's not fair, and if it's, you know, I'm already on a committee, and I've probably will be on another one fairly soon that has been ongoing, that's gonna take up more time. I just can't, I can't do anymore, and I just feel that if we had, if some of these people who aren't here will say it, if they step down and let other people get on the board, those people could then take on a committee. I mean, Nick, I don't know how you do it quite frankly.
Completely agree with you, I mean, you know, things, life happens.
It happens, and I'm not.
You look at tonight, and I've only been the rep, uh, to this board since March, and this is already like three or four times where we've had less members present than, in other words, four or five people.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it happened, it, it's happened two other times that I can think of, you know? Two other times, this would be the third? This would be the third time since March, we've had, you know, um.
Close, getting a quorum.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I will say, I come back. I come back from the lake for meetings.
Yeah, you're.
Yes, you do.
I will come back from Florida for meetings.
Yeah.
Cause I don't like Florida, but that's, oh, I hope no one, I hope my bride was watching that one. She knows that.
She already knows, I have a feeling.
But Gwen's right, we, we have, we have alternative members that show up for every meeting.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm respectful of, you know, Jen and Peter, who have young children, it's so hard to be here when you've got little kids and to take on more.
Well, it's a commitment, but that's why you, you know, that's why you wanna serve.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I'm just.
How, what are the numbers like? What are the numbers like on the board right now?
What do you mean?
How many, there's seven?
There's eleven.
Seven full members, four alternates?
Four, yeah.
And is there a maximum number of alternates?
Uh, yeah, there's five.
I think, I think they're.
So we're close to that.
So we, we are, we were maxed out until Marcia left.
Oh, that's right, Marcia's.
Yeah, so you could get another one, another.
Another alternative.
Alternative.
Yeah, you, you could, um, you could.
And.
I mean, having, you know.
Do you guys track attendance?
Yep, we do it every.
Meetings.
Well, the, I think it's in the select board rules, it's not in our rules, about, it, it talks about like sixty, making sixty, I think it's sixty percent of the meetings.
I don't think we have that in our rules.
No, no, we don't have it in our rules, but I believe it's like, cause, cause there's removal requirements, you know, for inefficiency, malfeasance, and neglected duty, and so forth, but I believe it in the, in the, in the committee, you know, like, general committee rules for they expect at least sixty percent of attend, like, they kind of set the, you know, the bar at that, and then your subject, you could be removed for that. And we've been tracking that, we track it every year, uh, annually, around spring, uh, and see what the last year has become, and everyone seemed, everyone, I think, met that last year, that may not be the case anymore, and Lang just came in actually yesterday, and wanted to get updated on the attendance and so forth, so I think he's thinking about it to make sure that, you know, that that's met, you know, people that are here on the board can.
And he's not here tonight.
No, I know, yeah. But he was gonna make a couple of calls, phone calls to some members, and see where they're at, and if they cannot make it, and their schedule just changed and doesn't allow their attendance anymore, then maybe it's best to, you know, leave that spot for someone who, who does want it, and, you know, can, can
Can attend.
Be more active and attend.
Yeah, okay.
But he, he's, he, we just had that conversation, I think, yesterday, or it was. But he, he's, he, we just had that conversation, I think, yesterday, or it was two days ago.
Okay.
It was this week.
One of the things about the historic commission is that at least the time I served there, I felt very much out of step because I'm not an architect. And they spend a fair amount of time in very, very detailed things that went way behind, way behind, way above my head. So that you need to have someone who is, well, we don't necessarily have an architect on, on this board, do we?
Not an architect.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Landscape architect.
I mean, that would be the most logical person.
Right.
But we don't have that. And it, I think that board required to be a participant, a real participant, rather than just filling a chair. You need to have some fair understanding. Oh, really, and I think what Patrick ought to do is to make it pretty clear exactly what is entailed. I mean, if you spend a whole two hours worrying about, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor this, but if you spend a whole two hours in some esoteric area that the average human being doesn't understand, that's, that's difficult. Um, I mean, sure, I could volunteer to go back on, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's gonna help the situation.
I do.
Well, I know you. But I'm not gonna bail you out.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I see what you're saying, but I think it's valuable to have kind of the, the layperson on, you know, you, you got, it sounds like they have plenty of architects already.
The planning board perspective though is different than what they have.
Or a perspective that doesn't come from the historic preservation background and architectural background. Someone says, you know, that they can apply a different perspective to it, I think is.
You know, and you're right. We, I mean, in the facilities committee, we have, um, you know, there's, there's two architects and then there's a, um, um, he's not an architect, but he's in that, that area. And then you have a former budget person, a retired budget person. And, and it works because he brings that perspective, even though a lot of it, we're talking about buildings and facilities, that individual brings that, that perspective. So that works that way. I mean, I think, you know, it's good to have a good blend.
Agreed. So I'll send out the email.
Okay.
Encourage, or we'll appoint, or you folks will appoint someone. Then they'll be appointed.
Well, if someone wants to do Rockingham Planning Commission, I'll do that. I'll switch out.
So that was, I mean, that's, that's been something I've been thinking about is where, you know, where the gen- you know, all the committee assignments are for the planning board and what the right fit is. And for me, it's not his, like, for me, it's not historic, that's for sure. Um, and, uh, so that doesn't feel like a good place for me to raise my hand, but is there some other committee for me to think about where, you know, the skills that I can bring to that committee will be beneficial, beneficial and additional? Um, so I, I guess I'd be interested in, i- i- are there opportunities of, uh, of, of swapping? If, if there's interest by other board members to let go of something and do something different? Um, I'd, I'd be interested.
Yeah, I'd be.
Sounds like there might, sounds like we got something brewing right here.
No, I can't.
Cause I think, I think you'd be, I think you would be, uh, interested in regional planning commission.
I absolutely am.
Yeah.
Wow.
But I, 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 I need to know. We should talk, we can talk offline.
Okay.
Good.
Well, how about this?
There you go. That's what's done.
So still do the email or let this discussion happen?
Well, let's let the discussion.
No, we're gonna put.
I don't know.
We're gonna put things on the chairs. Underneath on the bottom of the chair.
I'll just put it on the December twelfth agenda and then we can reconvene. I won't send the email tomorrow to see, see if this works out. Cause this may work out right here.
Sounds good.
Alright.
So if there are no more deals to be brokered?
Don't look at Dave.
Sounds good. Have I got a, for you?
Okay.
Did you wanna move to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen.